Call me to order. Take a motion to approve the agenda in minutes.
Motion to approve agenda in minutes.
I'll second it.
They moved in second, is there any further discussion? There are none, all's fair to say, I.
I.
Pose same sign, motion will carry rich.
Oh, good morning. They're all shouldering either would today, so that should go pretty dang quick. There's not a whole lot of need to probably scrape more off. Get it fit than you can else. We're doing as they, I don't have an update on when they're gonna paint stripes yet, but they know they wanna do after shoulders done, so I'm hoping it's this week. But those guys are busy, so. And so the only I have on the agenda this morning, other than that, I am starting to do. Need to get some preliminary plans or some concept statements for our next project, which is the STP private from from three ninetieth mark on thrust. For next year. And so I'm gonna start working on that stuff, so I can get into a February letting, cause now that every now that that's a that's got federal funding and that so the timelines are longer. And we're gonna run into that, a lot of other stuff, too, the timelines are gonna be longer, just because now we can't use a lot money anymore. We gotta run federal. Federal timelines instead, so that's what we're doing right now. So what I have on there, the as part of the new infrastructure bill that was passed by the federal government. The IIJA bill, there's approximately one billion dollars in funding for safe streets and roads.
To.
Available in the next within the next five years of the duration is planned. In order to get any of that funding. The county, the the local public agency has to have what they call a safety action plan. Yeah, and so. There's like fifty seven counties in the state that have them. And of of those plan, of those fifty seven counties that have them, they don't qualify, their plans aren't good enough. So the county engineer service bureau is gonna use, so part of that money is you can use the money to create action plans, and then once you have an action plan, you use the money for projects. A safety action plan would cost anywhere from through thirty to fifty thousand dollars for us to do it on our own. To try to get some of this funding, so what the service bureau is trying to do is they're trying to put together, say, we went to the state of Iowa, each county is gonna have a safety plan. And they think they can do it using. Part of the safety grant money, and then I think their own money, it was not gonna hopefully, there's gonna be zero cost to the county. So we'll have a safety action plan, and then once the safety action plans are placed, we can qualify for, but what we can start to assess what we need. I haven't read a safety action plan, I'm sure it's it's all about bringing accidents down and everything else, creating safer roads. So. You know, why envision in borrowing for money or being able to get grants for these is is, you know, whether we got steep side slopes, we can increase the slopes and whatever else use. Use that kinda funny for that, or if we've got, you know, I don't know, if we need to widen shoulders or something for certain things, maybe there's there's money for that, but. Right now, we have to get an action plan put together, and they need, they need to submit this stuff, I think, before September fifteenth. In grant funding to create the plans. So what we need is the boards to be on board with putting an action plan together, and I know there's some, in the past, there's. There's always been questions about whether or not you have a safety action plan, and you don't specifically follow it, whether there's a lot of liability, and I guess what has been said is that that. Safety action plans are not subject to discovery or admitted. In evidence and a federal or state court proceeding, so I I don't think that it's being it's a plan, it's something that we try to follow by law that we can do it. I don't know, I guess, I'll leave that up to the lawyers to figure out, but it sounds like it probably could be something good for us to try to capture some money to to better our roadway system a little bit, so if you guys wanna be on board with that. We have to have approval by, I have to submit everything by August fifteenth to the service bureau. In order to get on part of this, and we'll have our own safety plan or our our safety plan after that, so I don't know if you guys have any questions on it or not, but. I guess I would say, if we can get all ninety nine counties up here, try to capture whatever we can, it's it's money that we wouldn't have to come up with to do some things. That otherwise we have to use probably local money for farm market money or whatever for, so it's just an opportunity, whether we get any money or not, that's something else, but at least we have. That first step in having a plan available, and even though we wouldn't, I mean, the other thing is, is once we have a plan. It's best to try to follow them to the best of our ability, even when we're not going for grant money, so that's something to think about, too, but again. When you have that, well, I just read about the safety action plans being admissible. There's that, sorry, I mean, I'm not an attorney, but it sounds to me like having one isn't detrimental to us, but we would, and it doesn't hurt us to try to be a little bit safer, too, so.
Could open up other avenues, you know.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, when it comes to federal grants, federal funding, it seems like they've always got different guidelines than everybody else, so if we've got this stuff established, it's only gonna help in the future.
Right.
Because. Otherwise, it just seems like, well, you've gotta have this, you've gotta have that, when you're not eligible, and also you're gonna get a shorter period of time to apply for these grants.
Right.
Well, now we're behind because we don't have these plans or this this whatever they want, you know.
Right, right, you know, they they put a lot of red tape and hoops to jump through to try to to get funding, so.
Without doing it, we're not even eligible.
Right, exactly.
We got, we gotta make ourselves a shot in.
Yeah, you know, I don't know if it applies just to roads or could apply to bridges, I'm not quite sure, but it's still.
Either way, we can, if we can get money, we can put it somewhere.
Right. And and the service bureau and the the county engineers association. We get pretty creative on how to to capture money, so it's great, look at our our two bridges, we were tied together with Mitchell County, that was a way to get some federal money, we didn't get all of it, but we got enough of it, some people didn't get any, so. We find ways to try to take advantage when we can.
So that would probably lead up to the resolution you're talking about, so. We have a resolution for participation in the SS for a grant application, so. Whereas part of the new federal transportation bill, infrastructure investments and job act, there is over one billion in road roadway safety funding available in the form of safe streets and roads for all. Grants to be eligible applicants for this new safety funding county must have an eligible action plan in place. Whereas Iowa County Engineers Association plans to apply for the SS for a grant to develop and supply all ninety nine counties in Iowa with eligible action plans at no cost to the counties. ICEA encourages all ninety nine counties to participate in this grant application, and. Whereas the work county board supervisors will commit to achieve significant significant declines in roadway fatalities and serious injuries in Worth County. And whereas the Worth County Board of Supervisors recognizes the action plan and will assist the county engineer department in achieving the goal of dramatic decrease in roadway fatal. Fatalities and serious injuries and zero roadway fatalities and serious injuries by the year twenty thirty and twenty fifty respectively. Whereas Worth County Board of Supervisors after counseling with the Worth County Engineer desires to participate in a joint SS. For a grant to develop and receive an eligible action plan for Worth County. Therefore, be resolved by the board of supervisors of Worth County this, that this county does hereby request and include the statewide SA SS for a grant development action plan for all ninety nine. Counties in Iowa, so I will take the motion for approval of the resolution.
I'll make that a motion.
Is your second.
I will support that.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion, there are none, roll call both. Lobber.
I.
Stone.
Right.
So maybe I, motion will carry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Be a lot of work putting it together, I mean, they're gonna ask us for information, we'll provide, but they've got a lot of stuff documented already when it comes to crash analysis and things like that, so.
Like I say, you gotta, you gotta try.
What I noticed.
This next all ninety nine counties are gonna work together.
Right, so what I noticed in our county. We. Probably. We probably have the fewest amount of policies than other counties that around the state, and and there's nothing wrong with that, but what it does do for me is that if we have policies, it helps me in. Design, because I know the steps to follow, instead of always having to kind of make a an engineering judgment call on a certain situation, which we still do, and we have a policy, but. Sometimes you just end up, well, it it sometimes it makes it more difficult to do the job than if you just have a policy, you say, this is the policy, we're gonna follow it, so. I appreciate that, and we'll see what this leads us the next five years.
Good.
Thank you. Anything else?
How's Rock Run going?
I know it's going, we had to, uh, we're gonna. I think fuel prices had something to do with it, I think. Folks bought rock from Martin or from basic materials because of trucking, I think they tried to trying to keep the fuel costs down, and so. They ran low on the three quarter inch road stones, we're gonna let them use the one inch road stone, too, which probably shouldn't hurt anything.
Okay.
I saw him out somewhere last.
All that's been in my area, I know, probably.
They went by my place for two or three days there.
Yep, yep, so they're moving it, I haven't been able to touch base for a little bit on what exactly locations are at right now. It's going.
Okay, all right, nothing else, we'll move to drainage, and there is no drainage today that I can see here, so we have the claims, I'll take a motion to approve claim.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims.
Second.
Moved in second. Discussion. Same sign. Quarterly report.
Motion to approve the reports.
Your second.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion, none, all's fair to say, I.
Hey, guys, how about claims?
We just did them.
Oh, shoot.
That's okay. There was no drainage claims that I saw.
Oh, okay, got it.
We did, so we went right to claims, so.
And then how about the, did the drainage assessments end up there or not?
Uh, I don't see them in any file here, no.
Okay, I'll see if Val can get them down to you.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Think they're in there.
Thank you.
Okay. There is. Pay royalties abilities. So. Uh, there's no liquor, there's no. cigarettes, there is a firework permit. Dave Hogan, so I will take a motion for the approval of the fireworks permit.
Motion to approve fireworks.
Is it a second?
I'll second it.
Been moved in second, and any further discussion? There are none, all's fair to say, I. Pose same sign, motion will carry. All right, Melissa, are you on?
Let's see her on here.
Okay. Okay, now she's gonna be gone.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Okay. It's all right, we just saw her last week, so.
Yeah.
Chris.
Thank you guys for my report. Question.
Should I could see.
Not on the report.
Oh, everything. All good, I'm assuming, you know.
I just had, I I got the price for the air conditioner, it's probably. Scared me when I seen it, so I'm sure.
So what are there, so you whole thing?
A coil.
The A coil, that's the problem.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so they got it going, the old.
Yeah, two and a half years old.
He started back up.
And it was sixty nine hundred in parts plus labor, get it going.
To replace the A coil.
To replace it, and that's what we're waiting on it.
Yeah.
So right now, it's a Band-Aid, you know, waiting on that A coil, and that's the price of that plus labor.
Yep.
Gotcha, the email didn't quite fall, makes sense to me.
We just, yeah, it's only two and a half years old.
Yeah. Yeah.
Three, so.
He said that all the the two and three year old air conditioners, no matter what company it's from, they're all having problems.
They were drunk to start with, huh?
Yeah.
They twice.
But they made it through the war, do you?
Period.
If there is a paper that know, and it vibrates a little bit, and where those tabs by record welded to the A coil, that's where it's a hole in the A coil.
Nice.
I have another question, get me up to date here, cause I know we talked about this. We've got an overage report for like over seventeen thousand for last year.
Okay.
Where a thousand of it, little over a thousand was on wastewater, and over sixteen thousand of it was on water, and then I noticed on the report, that in January and February, that's when it was so high in there. This is money that we haven't recaptured, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just.
I mean, it's running over.
You're over budget, yeah.
Why was the water so high in January, February? What what happened there?
Water usage.
Oh, I realize that, but I mean, how come, that's what I'm sure that's what threw this thing off, wasn't it? When we end up with over sixteen thousand dollars, not true.
No, it'd be.
What happened was in our last contract, since our last contract, we just signed a new one now.
Yep.
But with this last contract, we did not have, so we.
Yep, sure. Yep, that was in there.
And we we did not have that as part of the chemicals, we added that in the process of this, so that expense went up, so in the new contract, that expense is figured in there.
In there now.
So we should be getting closer to zero, that's why we went over budget on that, it's because we added a new chemical for iron. And it costs us more, but we had to do it because we were.
Seven problems.
Some of it's probably from when the towel was rolled, cause we ran it twenty four hours a day for a month, so that's more chemicals, more electrical.
And more water, that's where the water usage would have came in, and extra water uses in those months.
I'm just picking brains, get me up to date to see, I look at that and go, wait, we're hold it here.
Yeah, but yeah, so now, like in this this next year, as long as we have an average year, we should be a lot closer to zero, because that new chemical is figured in.
Figured in, right.
So that that's probably the bulk of that expense.
And the wastewater might just be a pump was bad, we sent it in, you know.
Well, yeah, like a thousand dollars is.
Yeah.
Right. Some dollars. Yeah, well, the waterway, that's the bad thing about water wastewater, you don't do anything, everything's a thousand dollar, it really doesn't. Cause they know they got us, we have to buy certain products and. There's very few factors that do what we do and. Yeah, you don't fix much in the water wastewater or she for.
I just wanted to get up to date on the figures.
Yeah, no, that's, like I said, hopefully next year, like I said, we should be a lot closer.
Yeah. Last thing.
And guys, guys, we go over every year.
Yeah, a little bit, and we, yep, we have been in the past. So, but.
We're not, yeah. Rates.
Hopefully you can get closer again.
Yeah.
So. And get rates changed, too. Okay. Anything else, Chris?
No, I just, just wanted information.
Changing.
I'm glad AJ's got knowledge on that section.
Okay, department heads.
Um, I do have some personnel going down to help with right, right on Wednesday, and then I'm gonna be gone Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, some vacation.
Good. Okay.
Do we know where we're at, AJ, and maybe probably a couple weeks about where we are with any sort of? Tip.
Yeah, they're still working on it now.
Yeah.
I I just wanna know what.
Yeah. Yes, we're still trying to get the rest of the information to them.
Okay.
Um, I'm sure probably maybe next week, we probably have a call with them and or the next week or two with them and.
We're looking, we're still a ways out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's on the agenda for nine AM August eighth.
With.
North Jeff discussion with Northland's.
Yeah.
Okay, should be getting close.
Yeah, all right, I'm just curious, so I need to figure out planning a little bit with my time.
Yeah, sure, you know, hopefully we get through it and then do some spring bids or winter bids if we can.
I don't think right now we'll be able to make any winter bids at this time, I'm putting stuff together now for February, unless we do, well, then we shouldn't say that, if we get, we still have design to do. Consultant wise, we can hire consultants to get some stuff done, on local letting stuff, so it's be to, we can probably do it quicker, so I wouldn't, cause I wouldn't rule it out, but we're running out of, we're running for close to timelines here.
Right. But yeah, it's, we're still in the process.
Okay, all right.
A table longer than our.
No, I just wondered, I hadn't heard for a while, so I thought that.
It's pretty, whether he did it proper or not, he got it done, so.
Anything else, door, cover the camera door.
That's nice, okay, sorry.
But no, that's insurance, sorry.
Yeah. I didn't have.
Okay, then there's.
No, nothing really for me, I I know the phone system, I haven't heard it, one of my telephone rated to, you know, trip that trigger yet and get them all installed, but we'll have a, we'll have an install date here sometime, I would think in the near future, and all the phones are.
Okay.
Ready to go.
Good.
We just gotta pick a date for, it's gonna be a huge Band-Aid, cause it's, we can't do it onesie twosies, we gotta do it all at once, so.
Yeah.
But I know Central Square with the nine one one system, that box is up and running now, so we should be able to make that transition pretty easy.
All right, well, I guess you're still really on deck here, I guess, with the optional cyber breach insurance.
So Jackie sent you guys the quote from Cory, we did have a discussion last week in closed session about it, with facts, figures, numbers, I kinda gave you my. Opinion.
Yep, that's all we had asked for.
Yep, so I didn't know if there's any other discussion you guys wanted to go through, I mean, ultimately, it's up to you guys on whether you wanted to pull it for your. I guess.
I.
I, yeah.
I don't either.
Turn the other way, but I just think it's another one of those things. We're at risk regardless, so I. And the way things are going, it just keeps costing more and more and more, and if we can get a good guy like you here, and wherever we get.
Sure.
Kinda. We've been lucky, I guess.
We have, I mean, you know, we, I I think we do a really good job here of of training our employees, you know, we've invested the money into cybersecurity here. You know, and and like, you know, I keep hearing it's not a question of if, but when we're gonna get hit. But then you look at what's being offered, I don't know if that's, you know, the the return on investment is there.
That's the thing, that was my question, too. Where they're. One of the one of, in certain areas, they didn't have to cover this.
That's the thing with with the amount of. Loopholes, it seems like they can get out of versus are what are, you know, we're actually gonna be covered for.
Right.
I would say we just take our chances.
We're spending the money for protection, I mean, you're doing the tool, and you're doing all the things we. Do.
Yeah.
We got coverage, we just don't have max coverage.
There there's a certain level we're covered for right.
Yeah.
And this is.
Loopholes on that level, well, yeah, even with the max, you still got the loopholes.
Yeah. The the industry is really telling us they don't wanna cover it, but, you know, for a certain price, they will.
Right, that's why the price is not the way they are, cause if you were able to pay them, they'll, then they know they're gonna land, and they'll take the chance.
I, you know, personally, I think this is probably gonna go the same way as hail insurance, you know, the federal government's gonna step in sometime. And start doing, you know, whether do multi peril or.
Right.
You know, I I would think it'd probably be a regulated industry sometime down the road.
It's gonna have to be.
I, that, that's what I'm kinda hearing from some of the insurance folks as well, so.
So I guess really, it's no actions, no action.
No action, no, if you guys happen to change your mind, or if you get somebody in here that says.
Do it, and we can always address it again, yeah, hopefully. Stand up, I guess.
I I know that's, of course, we just renewed it for another thirty days, so I I think, you know, if we do wanna take action sometime, we'll just reject Cory and.
Okay, sounds good, all right, so ARP fund project request.
Well, the ARP committee met last Monday after our meeting, and. Had the discussion courthouse camera and security system, which would include all new cameras everywhere, new door. Switches, key fobs, windows, I mean, everything. At the tune of three hundred and thirty eight.
If you want the breakdown. And Will from Ricotta is on the line, and he can, he can jump in if I say something completely wrong. Uh, but this would be all new cameras, and this is just not replacing cameras, this is cameras in places that we, the the sheriff and I and and the security committee felt were the best places to go with these. So the equipment we're looking at is hundred and twenty seven thousand. Oh, yeah, equipment is hundred and twenty seven installations, a hundred and eight thousand, because we've got this lovely courthouse that we've got to drill holes into. And then tenure licensing is a hundred and thirty nine thousand, so, but that gets us ten years to the service.
So there's not a reoccurring monthly service or yearly annuals.
For ten years.
That's, this is all part of it.
Correct, yep, cause currently, right now, we're paying about, I think. For the licensing in the current system.
Yeah.
A year. Um, which, you know, it adds up, and the cameras are aging, you know, how it's a little bit, and, you know, we're, we've got some analog cameras that we need to replace that we stopped that, that purchase on, so. Uh, but this takes care of quite a few of the issues on our security committee, the assessment we got from SISA, and it also addresses the um, the election security. And just for your FYI, Jackie, I talked to SOS, and they're, they, your Hava funds can cover one camera.
So does that use the whole ten?
I I'll get the quote, they're supposed to get that to me this week, so we can break that that out of the quote.
One camera, woo.
Yeah.
Better than zero.
I I I tried for three, and they shot me down, so they could do the one.
Wow, better you than me, they've already shot me down twice.
Okay.
This does help with our problem, we have little locks on the doors in the jail.
Good.
If we did move to a different facility, we would have to switch solenoids out, but ninety nine percent of what we'd be putting in is transferable, we're doing a new structure.
Will, anything?
No, thank you, that sounds pretty thorough from what you described.
You're very, you're very kind, sir, thank you.
So anyways, it was discussed with the board. Well, we do have the August first, do you wanna talk about the numbers?
So, and Will did, I was hoping we'll recover that, but that's okay, um, so there is some incentives to get this thing signed up before August first. They will waive shipping, which is about three grand, um, and then also there is a effect of August first is a price increase on the access controls. And the card readers, and that's about fifty five hundred dollars, so if total savings, if we sign up before July twenty ninth, it's about sixteen five, turn on this project. So that's kinda why we had this print today.
Okay.
So.
And it went through the committee.
Yep.
Committee was all in favor of spending those dollars on that. Um, so that's why it's brought to this board now.
Um, I guess, so we can probably take a motion for the required approval.
We've got the bits, yeah.
So it's three seventy four minus sixteen?
No, it's, it's three eighty eight. Three, three hundred eighty thousand five hundred dollars, uh, if we sign before July twenty.
Well, it's extra sixteen on top of that.
At sixteen top of it.
If we wait, if we wait another week.
And it's, you know, there's some supply chain issues involved, I know Will, last time I talked, they said they've got plenty right now of inventory for a project this size, but he said there's, I mean, schools right now are just going crazy on that stuff, putting these in, just because of what's happening.
Longer your wait, tighter, yes.
That's why I want to install it, so then.
Ah, that's a great question, um, I know on the Ricotta side, they've got all the inventory that they need. We'll, we'll interrupt if they don't, um, but as of last time we talked, um, there's some rocky switches that might hold us back a little bit, because I need to, you know, these are, these are. File based camera systems, so they're IP based. Um, and then the the big holdup will be SCI coming in and doing wire. Cause they've got to run a lot of your wire. So a good chunk of the installation cost is this, is then coming in. Cause there's gotta be wire rented doors that haven't had wires rented in for. In some locations.
And this will.
This is gonna be a dumb question, Bo, what happens when the power goes out?
Um, the cameras will keep going because they're powered over ethernet, um, so all those controllers and everything else will, as as long as the facility keeps going, my battery backups hold out, and the generator kicks in like it's supposed to, uh, we'll be fine.
Okay.
Uh, the only facilities that are not covered by generator would be the treasurer's office and the satellite office.
Hey, and me.
We don't care about engineers.
And we, uh. This is all the same system that's going out at Keens and Worth County Lake, too, so then.
Correct, it will be.
Sheriff's Office, two or three different systems to monitor everything.
That's good.
There'll be only one camera that'll be off, and that'll be our tower camera will be still set alone by itself, just because the tech, Ricotta doesn't carry that type of.
And that's a, that's a PTZ camera, and Ricotta doesn't do those, just because of the ten years, the less moving parts, of course, longer the camera's gonna last. Their class.
So. Yeah. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the uh, project request for camera and security using ARP funds.
So sorry.
I'll second that.
Been moving the second, and any further discussion? And none, all's fair to say, I. And not all's in favor, say aye. Both same side, motion carries, alright. Well, thank you for all the work, so. Alright, uh, supervisors weekly.
Uh, I had Windward Vetco Executive Board. And, uh, you know, Melissa gave a report and update that you guys all got. Uh, biggest thing we talked about was home base Iowa. You know, and fifteen, the state has already put together their incentive package, we just gotta figure out what our county's gonna be. And it's been kinda kicked down the road quite a while here, it's time to do something. You know, and one of the suggestions she made was that. The same thing as one of the other counties is doing where. Uh, they offer up to a hundred thousand relocation support package to veterans, moving from outside of. What's that?
Thousand?
A thousand, yeah, what'd I say?
Hundred thousand.
Oh, no, sorry about that.
Population increasing.
Yeah, you'll fill these homes up. No, thousand, so that's something we gotta look at down the road here, get it figured out. Uh, had Windward Vetco Advisory Board meeting, same thing. Uh. They are working, Melissa is working on the covenants out of the. Boy gaming because of our. What's off of the. Casino out there.
Yep.
Um, the OPN initial design, which I was, I didn't get it, I had a doubled up meeting the last time, that's pretty much done. And I did see that designs, which really looks good. And then, uh, she kinda got us up to date on the ready fuels, the conditional use permits are updated and formalized. And then North Iowa Long-Term Recovery Committee is gonna have an open house event in September. And then we had just community reports, so. That's the two I had last week.
And, uh, when we're vetco, same as you, and I was on vacation the rest of the week, so nothing else.
I just had one more echo last week and you recovered yourself, we're good, alright.
Thanks for the report.
Even if, even if I got a number switch. And that's not cotton stone, that's just what some other ones are doing.
That's alright.
We'll figure out what we're gonna do in Worth County here.
And I see his numbers anyways.
Yeah.
Kinda fluctuate pretty good. Uh, so. So we have nothing else, I haven't got anything from Valerie, so I guess, uh, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, second, moving second, all in fair say aye. Both same time, motion carries, thanks everyone.
Thank you.